And to order, please stand for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is the opening reading of bids. There are none. Moving to the reports and requests. Order commissioners, the accounts payable docket. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? All right. Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelmi, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes. Next, appointment of PSAP executive director, Commissioner Dieter.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, there was a process where this was put out. Um, we received, oh, initially seven applicants. Okay, after those were purged, I think, three went to the operations board. Uh, they made recommendation, executive board met and unanimously recommended that Ms. Toby be sent on with a favorable recommendation to the commissioners to vote. So I don't know if you really need to read the entire.
My partner wrote it. It's wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns from the board of commissioners? Right, is there a motion?
A motion to appoint the PSAP executive director Julie Tobey. Does that you pronounce her last name? Tobey?
Tobey?
Yeah.
Or Toby?
Toby.
I think it's Toby.
Toby, okay.
Second here.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
What do I?
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelmi, how do you vote?
Aye. This is an exciting time for St. Joseph County. Julie's done a great job, um, kind of filling in foray after he left and and we would normally kind of go through a bit more formal process to hire someone, but she's been serving in interim role and there is some, some sense of urgency that we want to make sure this department gets completed. So I'm glad we're able to do that this morning.
Can I comment real quick? Most certainly. Thank you, sir. Yes, this is a very good hire for St. Joe County. Um, again, since ESAP started, it's, it's been behind eight ball a long, long time. There's been a lot of good things going on from the county council extending, um, compensation over there to the work that Julie has done and the unique thing. She's been there since it started. Um, I think she's done phenomenal job to have the recommendation of the former director, Ray Schultz, the South Bend police chief, Michoacan police chief, St. Joe County sheriff, the South Bend fire chief. So I think it's going to be a, a great hire. She works tremendous there and knows the people there. So I think it's going to be very favorable for the citizens of St. Joe County to have her as our PSAP director.
Well, I agree, and I, I have known her for a long time because she's been there. I met up with her. And so I appreciated that and touching base with her and I, when she told me exactly how she was doing, what she was up to, oh, great. I said, yes, good job. So yeah, I was glad to catch up with her again. So yeah.
Fantastic. All right, moving on to approval of Dinsmore and Shoal, Shoal, Shoal LLP statement of engagement terms. Mr. Mish.
So, uh, this is in regards to the Portage Manor, uh, new build process. Um, Dinsmore has bond counsel that we seek to engage to take the next step, uh, towards being able to provide, uh, the necessary information to counsel on whether the funding of, uh, the Portage Manor project is economically feasible. Um, we have, um, already gone through a process with MKM architecture to come up with preliminary drawings, uh, preliminary specs. Uh, the purpose of this is to take the next step, uh, which would be uh, to kind of drill down, really sharpen the pencil and get to numbers to ensure that Portage Manor can, um, at least break even or make some money and continue as an ongoing concern. So bond counsel is an integral part of that.
Questions or comments?
I just have a question about, so this is actually going to be a company that's actually going to help move forward with getting bonds? Is that what that's all about?
Correct. So if you look at the contract, there's two not to exceed prices. Um, it'll be at an hourly rate. But the initial phase is a very, I think it's less than $10,000 not to exceed price. Just look at the initial phase of uh, what, what is the best type of bond to use in this situation and what would be the estimated finance, uh, cost to give counsel that information?
Good. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Dinsmore and Shoal LLP statement of engagement terms.
Second.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
What do I?
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelmi, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passed. Next, move to the auditor amendment of emergency rental assistance 1.0, Our Lady of the Road.
Ms. Brandy. There's somewhere else.
Wherever you would like to stand is great.
Brandy, I heard Deputy County Attorney. We are here for all of the items under the auditor. They're essentially the same thing, but for separate recipients of the emergency rental assistance program. Um, Our Lady has one extra thing that I will describe, but overall, this is a documentation backfilling exercise. At the beginning of the program, each of the sub recipients estimated what their administrative costs to administer the program and process the aid and get it out to the recipients would be. And we didn't realize when we were writing the contracts that those estimates were just for the first tranche of money they got. So once they got through all the first set of money, they had more costs to deal with the later distributions that they got, which were not accounted for in how the contracts were originally written. So all of these amendments essentially would just backfill the documentation of the numbers match. And for the most part, the, uh, recipients actually didn't use all of what they were allocated through the PO process. They only are allowed under the contract and it would still be the same way. They would only get what they actually incur. The, um, single addition to the Our Lady contracts, they were informed by the federal government since they had more than $750,000 and various sources of federal funds over the last two years that they have to undergo an audit. Since a significant, not the majority, but a significant portion of that money was ERA funds. They asked if they could use their admin money that they had been allocated for that, even though the ERA 1.0 program is done. It ended at the end of last year. And ERA 2.0, they intend to be totally finished providing services at the end of this month. So their amendment includes a second provision that would just say, since these would be allowable indirect costs up to the point where they're attributable to ERA, the audit, that they can use up to whatever their actual incurred ERA percentage would be this audit. They could make the request to the county and get that money out of there and add the costs. So I know that was lots of questions.
Before I go to questions, Sir Cossler, is it, should we take each one of these separately?
Separately, okay. So are there any questions?
Of course, of course. Commissioner, so this is money that's going to be spent or has been spent?
The admin money has not been spent, but it's been allocated through the purchase order process.
Is that?
One of the documents that were attached to.
Is it A, under A, on our agenda?
Or under A would be Our Lady.
And that total is two, 263, 250?
For ERA 1.0, which is the first one. It's easier if you just go to the first page, it should reference the agreement from ERA 2.6 in the very first.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the way that it was done to streamline the process was once they, uh, they put in their amount, this is how much we can process. If an ERA administrator would issue a purchase order.
Who's the administrator of this stuff?
At this time, it is Max Ham from InFocus, um, throughout up until January of this year. Corey Shipgo was in that position.
So there's two different people. One, we have a singular one that doesn't know.
Yes.
Okay. Because as you know, we, we, the county commissioners had an issue with a bunch of money being spent, um, how it was being spent, the lack of transparency, the lack of good accounting principles. So this page here, it comes up to choose 263, 50.
That would be the first purchase order. That was, that was Our Lady's initial saying, we can process this amount of aid, which was the 182, 812, 50 for the rental and the 69, 37, 50. The assistance part has been spent.
And is there documentation of where that was spent on?
Uh, that would not be in my possession. Max Ham would probably have that.
Okay, and then is that part of the stuff that we got in that big box?
Yes.
Okay, because on page two, there's handwritten notes, which is to me disturbing of like all this.
Right, I saw that too.
I think that may have been something Corey was writing for herself. I don't know the answer to that question. But insofar as what we're asking for you today, the, uh, items on each of these POs that's listed as administrative expenses for emergency rental program, that 19-5 on the first page of the POs was what was originally authorized. The, uh, additional amounts from one point out that they have.
Right, so it starts, starts with the printed, our 200,000 and then it has handwritten 40,063, 94, so on. That money has been spent.
I think those amounts may have been something Corey was writing to herself. I don't know the answer to the question on the handwritten notes.
It would seem odd that if you're writing something to yourself, you write it on a document that you're giving to us. I have no idea.
Well, this is all my. This is all Max Ham had access to.
This wasn't necessarily a, a formal document that was meant to be passed along. This was a working document that she was trying to, I think, just track of.
But that, that's the problem I have of, if we're writing this, I, I don't see any parallel paperwork that can say this money was spent for this.
Well, what I can tell you is as far as the admin costs go, what actually gets given to the sub recipients, they have to justify it by providing us with an invoice with documentation that they actually incurred those costs.
Do we have those?
I do not personally have them. Max Ham would have them.
It's not your fault, but that's this whole thing that was the issue I had.
The question I always had too was, well, so, and I, I kind of read, tried to read through that like he did too. So we're going to be improving and increasing how much money then?
Okay, there, there's no real increase here. The POs were already issued. What the problem is, is that the way that the contract was written, it said that it required a written amendment to change that number, right? And it didn't happen just because I think Corey thought this would count at the time. I can't ask her, she's not in the area.
The first round of money, they had to, they had to determine what their administrative fees would be through the ERA, the first, um, round of funding.
Yes.
And that was, and that was.
And understood that was just their estimate.
And that was, and that was done, but then when the second round of ERA money came in, then they had to make a corresponding change of that documentation, which didn't happen because there was not a great deal of clarity from the federal government, what had, what had to be done. So this is kind of a bookkeeping thing going back, um, and.
And I can tell you that the, uh, the actual amounts that were incurred under, for this one ERA one for Our Lady, the amount that they actually estimated for their, uh, initial administrative costs, they actually came in under it. So they won't actually be getting any more than what they submitted to us.
Oh.
And all the funding, all the, all the rental assistance money that is all gone out or is in the process of going out for the ERA phase two. This is an administrative function to just clean up.
Because we know for a fact they are getting audited. We don't want their documents to be mismatched. They won't get any more money.
So no more money is going out. This is just a bookkeeping item.
The only people that are still providing services under the ERA program are, Our Lady has a few clients they're finishing up with. They'll be done at the end of this month. The, uh, admin costs that they would incur from here out would just be from the audit and I mean, the funds would be allowable under the legislation and guidance from the federal government as indirect administrative costs. They just want a clarification that they were allowed to, since they were finished processing, they could still submit the invoices. That is the what? The invoices, invoices showing that they were incurring that cost. But as far as what's gone out now from ERA one for Our Lady, their initial estimated cost was $19,500. They only actually submitted $13,929.23. So they actually came in under what their initial estimation was. This would increase the initial estimation to a, uh, total of 43,520, that's what I have here. Yeah, 43, that's what I thought. I'm almost certain there's no way that they're going to hit that number because it would only be a certain percentage of ERA 1.0 funds that would be allowable that they could use for the audit. I don't know exactly what the percentage of federal funds is. They could only use a portion.
But really it's just what we've approved and they haven't really used it yet. So now they want to approve it moving forward with the same amounts that we had sent them already, right?
Basically, yes.
Okay, so could we just do A and B then? Because it's the same thing on both of those.
I think we should do each one individually. We don't, we don't, we can have, uh, we can have the conversation about all of the agreements right now.
If you have, it would make sense to do them all at once.
But we can just, we'll just, we'll just vote on each item individually, but there are any other. It's the same process with real services, St. Vincent, the URC, only they're not being audited, so.
Not at this time that we know.
So this is just kind of cleaning up an error that was, we didn't even know we made.
We only found it because Our Lady made the request about their audit funds.
So, and then this is, this is a very fluid process. We got very limited guidance from the federal government, but more importantly, we wanted to make sure we got the money in the hands of the people that needed it the most. So we moved as quickly as we could and, and this is not uncommon around other entities as well.
Yes, this is largely documentation backfilling.
Sure, I got another question for, so all the amendments in this, we go A, B, C, D, E, F. What, what's the total of all that ERA money? If you don't know it, I can get it later because it's quite expensive.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't know the answer to that.
I think it's over six million.
Uh, I can tell you that it is within the allowable amount.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. The, the point that I'm making, we should do a better job of adhering to, and again, as Andy alluded to, this all is all new to everybody. But we should be cognizant of, if we're giving money to entities, we should know what is being spent for, that it's being spent for what it's allocated for. And we have checks and balances. And that's what this, this commission did when we had some issues with the property of Niles, that there was just so many things, well, we give money to here and they give it to this person and gives it to this person. So that's my biggest concern.
On, on, I can tell you on this one, I think where we went wrong was is we, as in me and Jamie Woods, when we were writing the contracts, did not get the understanding that this number that we were originally given only was the first tranche of money. It would have been written differently.
It's easy to go back now, but that's going forward. And that's why our attorney did a ton of work and there's a box that's still in my office of receipts with a picture and a thumbs up because that's how the receipt was given. Like, we have to do a much better job and, and again, that's kind of our role of making sure moving forward and all this stuff with all, all the money that's come in. Um, we need to do a better job of keeping track of this type of stuff. So hopefully with an audit that goes there, um, so that's all I have. It just.
Thank you.
Any, anything else from the board? If not, is, I'll take a motion on ERA 1.0 for Our Lady.
1.0, okay. Motion to approve.
Are you looking at Lee, little asterisk, we have to do a better job of keeping track of this. I will second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm voting aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelmi, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes ERA 2.0, Our Lady. Is there a motion?
Oh, a motion to approve.
Same as I said before. Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
2.0.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelmi, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes ERA 1.0, Real Services. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelmi, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes and make a motion to approve ERA 2.0, Real Services.
You make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelmi, how do you vote?
Aye. Is there a motion to approve ERA 1.0, St. Vincent de Paul?
Yes, motion to approve.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelmi, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes finally ERA 1.0, URC. Is there a motion?
I'm sorry, what did she say?
Motion to approve.
No, no, she says, I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
No, I just asked if you, if you voted on the St. Vincent, when I missed it.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelmi, how do you vote?
Aye. All right, moving on to see.
I want to warn you guys, there will be two more of these. They didn't come in quite in time. So, so you're not surprised.
So we get to see you again. That'd be great.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
All right, St. Joseph County Police approval to apply for OVC fiscal year 2022 services for victims of human trafficking grant.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Troy Warner, uh, in-house counsel for Sheriff Redmond, in office inside the St. Joseph County Jail 401 West Sample Streets, South Bend, Indiana. Today we bring you a request to apply for a Department of Justice Office of Victim of Crimes, uh, Grant. Um, this would be, if we are successful, this would be the second OVC grant that, that the Sheriff's Department has been awarded. The, uh, first grant we were awarded in 2020 was a domestic violence related grant that allowed us to fund a domestic violence team. Uh, this is Dana Baxter. Uh, Dana Baxter is technically an employee of the Family Justice Center, but, uh, through that grant, we pay for Dana's salary and she is housed inside of her apartment and has, uh, been working in partnership with one of our officers on the domestic violence response team that helps victims in the situations. Um, this Baxter and the sheriff have also, uh, created a crisis services unit that consists of, uh, using some of those funds after reimbursement to hire a second social worker that specializes in mental health that is paired up with an officer. So we now have two, four, four members of two teams. Um, this grant is a human trafficking related grant, which would allow the, the crisis services unit to expand and start, uh, doing things in that area. Um, Dana is going to be working on the grant and, uh, um, kind of talk a little bit more about it.
So Dana Baxter, social worker, St. Joe County Police Crisis Services Unit at 401 West Sample. Um, so as Troy stated, we have created the crisis services unit. So, um, Sheriff and I believe now is a good time to start shifting the focus to human trafficking. So OVC, who we hold the current funding for, has designated Indiana as a target state as far as human trafficking efforts go. And we do have some task forces below us in the state and above us, but we don't have anything in this north central Indiana region. Um, so this is kind of a little baby step towards getting a task force here in St. Joseph County. Um, last month, we did meet with key stakeholders in the human trafficking world. Um, the Homeland Security, FBI, uh, we brought in somebody from the Y, from the Attorney General's Office, just kind of seeing what the need was here in St. Joe County and how we could start moving towards that larger, um, task force idea. So, um, this particular funding is through OVC, um, which is the same that currently houses the funding that I have for the domestic violence team. It would allow us to have a specific program coordinator that would be able to, one, serve victims that we were identifying, um, as victims of human trafficking, two, increase the training for law enforcement in the area as well as other community agencies, because we've noticed one downfall is that we think we might be missing the boat and not really recognizing when we're coming across somebody who is a victim of human trafficking. I think they're being labeled maybe domestic violence or sexual violence, and we're not really seeing that whole picture. And so, um, Homeland Security has agreed to help us with that, that sort of training. So that'll create the program coordinator. It will also allow us to have specific services for those victims that will all be reimbursed through the grant. So that could be housing, that could be counseling. Um, medical is a huge one. We're hoping to partner with the St. Joe, uh, Regional Med Center, same department, because they see a lot of these human trafficking cases and they're providing the forensic and the medical needs. And those unfortunately, um, can only be covered by the state if they, uh, if they, uh, go through a prosecution and sometimes that's really hard for victims. So if we can kind of step in and make sure they're getting those medical needs attended to without having that caveat of, you know, the strings attached, that would be great. Um, this is kind of part of a, like I said, that larger strategic plan that Sheriff and I have for creating the task force, but it will expand our services. We do, uh, recently in the last month have added human trafficking as a purview of our domestic violence grant so that we can say that we serve those people and also, um, begin providing services. So we were given the approval through OVC to do that. And so this just kind of expands on that. So, um, I imagine it will be, well, I know for sure it'll be definitely one, um, position potentially housing another officer or getting the reimbursement for their, uh, particular salary so that they can focus on human trafficking as well. I really like that multi, multidisciplinary team kind of dynamic that we have going on. Um, yeah.
But what's the potential grant amount?
Yeah, so, uh, I believe it's 440 you can ask for. Um, we're still in the early stages because it just recently got dropped. So I'm estimating we'll probably be around the 400,000 range, which is what my, um, LEV, uh, the domestic violence grant was. I think that's totally manageable. Um, but we've been told by the Office for Victims of Crime that ask for a lot because human trafficking victims go through so much money as far as what they need holistically. Um, food, shelter, clothing, emergency phones, medical care, all of that stuff. It, it's a lot greater than it is with our domestic violence victims. So I am estimating it'd probably be around the 400,000 range for three years.
Is there a match component from a county standpoint?
There is a 25% match. Um, the great thing about the match is that it's both cash and in kind. So, um, through me working with the crisis services unit, um, as a social worker, I've been able to house interns pretty much every semester since I started. Those hours count towards match. So we get to attach a dollar amount to that and they count towards the match, which is great. Also, um, because I do the grant management, this will be a strategic plan, but also anything that's free to me can also count towards the match. And then, um, there's a fundraising aspect that we could do if we needed to. We have a plan for that. Some, um, gift card drive sort of thing. But yeah, I think reasonably, we can probably meet it with the intern volunteer component. I'm not too worried about that. And I will, as I ask for the amount, I will keep that in mind, um, when I'm thinking about what that match will look like.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Sure. What's the extent of human traffic in, in St. Joe County?
Yes, oh, sorry.
So there is a need here, uh, both sexual trafficking and labor trafficking. Um, there's a couple hotels and rostland, we know it goes on. And then I think we also, from studies and the feds know that we're missing a lot of it. We just, we aren't, our officers, hotel owners and operators, we just aren't trained to see it. It often gets written off as domestic violence or, um, something else.
So I personally have worked with two victims in the last eight months, but those are just two that I knew of. Um, our partners at St., or our friends at St. Joe Regional Med, I think they said around 15. Um, a lot of those were actually labor trafficking. Um, obviously with the hotels, there's a, a lot of sex trafficking going on. We are missing the identification of that. But part of this plan is to do a needs assessment in the jail and to start screening, um, those individuals who come into the jail to identify whether they are part, uh, or have been used for human trafficking. And so that way we can get better numbers. So like when I said this is a baby step towards that strategic plan, the needs assessment is in kind of this.
How do you define labor trafficking? migrant workers?
It could be, um, so it's fraud, force or coercion. So somebody who is, uh, carrying out an act under fraud, force or coercion. So you could be, you can have migrant workers where the person they're working for is holding their documents so that they cannot, um, leave until they've worked an amount. You can have migrant workers who are being paid so little to just pay for their board and room and food so they can't get ahead. Um, we have some massage parlors that have been looked at in the area. Um.
Does county police have enough personnel to do this, to do this? That's part of the whole grant or some part of the council?
Um, so I think the grant would be, so that's a good question. We don't know that answer until we really begin, to be honest with you. I, I think, uh, at this time, what we're using the grant for is somebody to help us narrow in and focus on that.
Would that be a sworn county officer or sworn South, or we don't know yet?
It's, it's probably going to be a social work type because right now officers, we need them on the road. Um, so the idea is that that program coordinator would be a type of social worker who focuses in human trafficking and builds the services, figures out what the community needs are, and then.
You'll, you'll have to have a buy-in from South Bend Police, Michoacan Police, and everybody.
Yeah, absolutely.
You don't know how officers are. So it's going to be, again, I, it'll be on you.
It'll be a countywide task force.
We're going to have to have a lot of, of input and a lot of personnel to do this correctly.
So that's next stage. So this is the pre, so, uh, human, uh, or the Homeland Security and the FBI have been. So human, or the Homeland Security and the FBI have been really informative to us and are more than willing to work with us on the next stage, which is that task force. But this right now is kind of like building, so this is to build Sancho County's police services, and then we expand out to the task force. So because I don't want to do something too fast either, where we can't, you know, pull up our end of the bargain, so this is kind of just easing into it, make sure that we have the processes.
Bilingual applicants or people?
Potentially, yeah.
I think that's a must.
Yeah.
I'd be glad to help out any way you want.
Well, me too, and oh my gosh, I get so, so sad when I see things happen on the TV and on the news. Oh, no. So again, if there's things that, you know, I really like to support the development of the new anti-trafficking strategies, so we can help our citizens here and make sure we're.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I think we have a motion for a favorable recommendation.
A motion? Second that.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Thank you both, and for our cross.
I hope you keep you updated.
Appreciate the sheriff's willingness to look outside of normal law enforcement activities to try and find ways to have fewer people in the jail and better serve and protect. So thank you on his.
Tell him thank you.
Moving on to Portage Manor Agreement with Byron Wellness System.
All right, so the county has been walking down the road of potentially building a new Portage Manor that is in process right now. Through that process, Byron Wellness Systems has been consulting on the new build, the pro forma, the financials, that type of thing, because they just went through this several years ago in Allen County. Recently, the county had an issue where there were a few complaints made downstate, and we had an audit done. The state tagged Portage Manor with two minor violations, and the third violation was not having a licensed administrator. So to give a little history on that, when we lost our prior administrator, she did not have a secondary licensed individual in place. For a little background on that, Byron Health has three licensed administrators, therefore you're in compliance when the administrator takes a vacation or whatnot. We didn't have that, so we were put in a bad position very quickly. Mike Eby stepped up as interim director and was instructed to get licensed as quickly as possible. I guess he's reported that there's some hurdles to the state system and finding a preceptor to get all of his hours and then he needs. The Portage Manor Board went through a process of interviewing, I believe, fourteen individuals to take over as administrator. We had one licensed individual apply, that one licensed individual was extended an offer, however, she declined. So Christine Hines was hired. Christine is not licensed, but was also instructed to get licensed as soon as possible. However, we've been operating without a licensed administrator since September. The state is unlikely to shut us down, but that is a potential. There is a far greater potential that we get fined and fined significantly for not having a licensed individual. So the Portage Manor Board and myself went out and tried to solve this issue, and Deb Lambert is the individual who Byron Wellness is going to lend us for two months. So we're in compliance and have a licensed individual. She's going to help us find a licensed individual to step in after her two months end and also support Christine in getting licensed. So we're on the right track. We just had a little hiccup here, and it was probably a big hiccup, but it needs to get resolved. So that's what the agreement in front of you is, is to retain Deb Lambert's services for a period of two months to assist in running Portage Manor.
And the subsequent item is just the announcement of the action that we're about to take as part of the agreement.
Correct, so Deb Lambert would be nominated, if you so choose, as the administrator of Portage Manor for the next two months. And then at that point, hopefully, we'll have a new licensed individual to take a look at.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Can we approve both of these at the same time then?
Well, I think we should do separate.
Have a good question. So in two months, if we don't get somebody, she will just continue to serve or?
I don't know.
Is that a good question?
That is a good question. I don't know if she'd be willing to do that, so she's from Fort Wayne. She is uprooting her life to come here a minimum of four days a week. So she is somewhat hopeful that someone she had precepted, who is now either has taken or is waiting for the final results of the third test, or three tests you have to take to get a license. May, and who is from South Bend would be interested in the job. However, we'd have to go through the more formal steps of the board interviewing and then making the recommendation.
We may be back here in two more months, possibly.
It's a possibility.
Okay. It's because the issue, since I've been the commissioner, we've done a lot with Portage Manor. With this last turnover in September, unfortunately, all the hiccup, my own personal opinion, I think the board could have done a better job of making sure that things were supposed to be in place by the people that were picked to run that. But we can't do anything about that. So hopefully, this new person comes in and we again really have to dive into what the future is going to hold for Portage Manor. So hopefully, we can find a good person and keep on doing what everybody here in the commissioner's office has been attempting to do, but then it, then it goes to our council. So down the road, hopefully, we can find which way we're going to go with Portage Manor. So I'm making a motion.
Any other question, before we do any other questions or comments?
No questions or comments? There's a motion?
Sure.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. So I'd like to thank your work, Frank, for the Portage Manor Board, what we have seen in the last nine, twelve months. Great, higher level of activity and of folks looking at, from a Portage Manor standpoint, that uncovered some of the issues that had maybe just been kind of floating beneath the surface. So I appreciate the work that they are doing to help bring Portage Manor back up to where it should be. And then, so we've got an announcement, which kind of, we've already made the announcement, we need to, what action, we're taking this agreement, do we need?
Motion to approve?
Motion to pointer.
Motion to a pointer, yeah.
Motion to approve?
Motion to a pointer.
Motion to a point, you got a motion?
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. All right, moving on to infrastructure planning and growth.
Good morning, Bill Shalley, Urban Development, part of Department of Infrastructure Planning Growth Office on seventh and eleventh floor. Before you today, a pre-development services memo that includes two proposals for appraisals and one proposal for title war. This is related to the potential acquisition of one six two two East Mishwalk Avenue to the coroner's office. I'm just very casually involved in this, just helping with these services. We have a proposal from Iverson Grove in the amount of two thousand dollars, it's a not exceed amount, appraisal services, eighteen hundred dollars not to exceed, and then Fidelity National Title on the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Just the, I guess, pre or after whatever this, because I think our engineer and they did the building inspection, the roof, everything's cool.
So all those, all those, no, those are, this is just a set value required by law to get to independent.
So you're seeing what Butler's thunder up?
I am helping Butler and then walking away from.
Good answer.
Any other questions or comments?
Move for approval.
That's the motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelni, how do you vote?
We should take a second motion on fidelity. Is there a motion for fidelity?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
None of business. There is none. Public comments. We'll start with public comments from our friends in the room.
I would like to.
Sancho County Commissioner Citizen of the month, by the way.
Thank you.
Right.
Again, thank you. Today, this was awesome. I'd like to read something from a book by Terry Tempest Williams called The Refuge. As word of Great Salt Lake's nasty disposition filtered through the western grapevine in the eighteen forties, the appeal of the Great Basin was tainted. A land that no one else wanted met religious freedom and community building without persecution. It was an environment perfectly suited for people unafraid of what only their hands could yield. But it wasn't easy. Winter quarters for the poorly provisioned families who had just arrived proved difficult. Their livestock had been decimated by wolves and Indian raids. Untended animals grazed down low crops and the harvest of eighteen forty-seven consisted of only a few marble-sized potatoes. The starving pioneers were reduced to eating crows, wolf meat, tree bark, thistle tops, seagull lily bulbs, and hawks. One member describes in his journal, "I would dig until I grew weak and faint and sit down and eat a root, and then I would begin again." Then the harvest of eighteen forty-eight looked more promising, and the saints' spirits were void. But just when a full pantry for each family seemed assured, hordes of crickets invaded their reed fields. The pioneers fought them with brooms, shovels, pitchforks, and fire. Nothing seemed to halt their invasion. In desperation, the farmers and the families fell to their knees with exhaustion and prayed to the Lord for help. Upon looking up, I beheld what appeared like a vast flock of pigeons coming from the northwest. It was about three o'clock in the afternoon. There must have been thousands of them. Their coming was like a gray cloud, and when they passed between us and the sun, a shadow covered the field. I could see the gulls settling for more than a mile around us. They were very tame, coming within four or five rods of us. At first, we thought that they were also after the wheat, and this fact added to our terror. But we soon discovered that they devoured only the crickets. Needless to say, we quit finding and gave our gentle visitors the possession of the fields. Their prayers had been answered, their crops had been saved. Over one hundred years later, Mormons still gather to tell the story of how the gulls freed them from the crickets. How the white angels ate as many crickets as their bellies would hold, flew to the shores of the Great Salt Lake, and regurgitated them, then to return to the fields for more. We honor them as Utah State Bird. While sitting on the edge of Great Salt Lake, I noticed the gulls flying in one direction. From four o'clock until dusk, with their slow, steady wing beats, they flew southwest.
Thank you so much, Mr. Earl.
Any other public comments from friends in the room? About from folks on Zoom. Marlene. You are muted, Marlene.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Morning, actually, I'm sorry. I just wanted to comment on Portage Manor Cemetery. I went there a couple weeks ago because I wanted to visit my grandfather's grave site. And I couldn't get through because of the trees were in the trailways. I don't know if they fell because of the weather or whatever, but I can't get through there. And also, I think that the gate is locked, that being from when we had the homeless people there and they had the fire. So I wanted to know, when would, when would that be cleared out so that, so that I could go visit his grave site? Also, we still don't have a sign there stating that there is a Portage Manor Cemetery back there. A lot of people don't even know about it. So those are the two questions that I had.
Thank you, we will get that to our friends at Portage Manor and get you answers.
Marlene, if you can call me, five three two twenty-two hundred after the meeting.
Okay, I sure will, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Marlene, Robin.
Hi, good morning. First, I wanted to say that I'm so glad to see Commissioner Fleming here this morning, and what a mess the paper made of her, and what a shame. She's worked so hard for this community and is elected, and I'm just so glad to, to see you here, Commissioner Fleming. Also, I just want to state that it was my absolute pleasure to serve the residents of Portage Manor. My heart is still at that building. I'm concerned that commissioners did not ask in this meeting, I'm sure there was maybe talks before this meeting, as, as politics normally happen that way. How much is it going to cost for an interim administrator on top of paying Christine Hines ninety-five thousand and Mike Eby? I'm not sure what he's being paid, maybe seventy-five thousand. So is it going to cost, what, fifty-five thousand for two months of an interim administrator that guarantees, what, no fines from the state potentially? I'm just completely disturbed. I know the census is very low there right now, one thirteen. The floors are very dirty. There's been money spent to have cleaning crews come in, which is unacceptable. The, the building, the, they can't absorb those costs, and Mike Mish knows that, he's seen where I had brought the overspending from. And then for my name, or it be implied that I left there without a second administrator, that is not code. Indiana code does not require two administrators. One, Luanne Becker served there for thirty-six years, one administrator. Administrator takes call twenty-four hours a day, but you do not need two administrators. Byron Center has three because they have different levels of care, which is code. If you have a skilled nursing facility, you need to have a licensed nursing home administrator. And then when you have an assisted living facility, you need a residential care administrator, or they can't be the same person. There's code. Unfortunately, the board is, is not real knowledgeable of code, and that's a shame. Because the residents of Portage Manor will suffer because of ignorance and greed and politics. So just wanted to tell you all that I'm still praying for Portage Manor, and it just, it really breaks my heart to see not these tough questions answered for the people that live there. Thank you.
You, Robin, just as clarification, Mr. Mish, is your legal opinion that the state requires more than one licensed?
Yes. If somebody leaves the country to go to Mexico, for instance, or is unavailable and can't be on call, then you definitely need a second individual.
Just for clarification sake. Any other public comments?
Just to rebuttal that, I'm in.
No rebuttal, thank you, ma'am, this is not a question and answer session. This is not a question and answer session. Any other public comments? Hearing that, a motion to recess is in order.
Second.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? All right. Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelni, how do you vote?
Let's do it, we are recessed.